Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So, before we get started tonight, I have some exciting news. I want to inform everyone in attendance that for the first time ever, the County Council Meeting is being livestreamed in addition to being recorded for publication on the Council's YouTube channel. Our goal in livestreaming the meeting is to give as many people as possible access to the council meetings in real time. By attending this meeting, I'd like each of you to know you are consenting to your image, voice, and comments being streamed in real time, recorded, and published. Anyone who has signed up to speak at a public forum, at the public forum, is consenting to livestreaming, recording, and publication of your image and your remarks. In addition to that, I just want to remind everyone that the council has had a longstanding rule with respect to food and beverage in the chamber and hats. So, I'm going to ask all of you that if you have food or beverage, please remove it. If you have a hat, please remove the hat as well while you're in the chamber. With that, is there a motion to approve the Journal for the Meeting of August 20th, 2019?
Mr. Presiding Officer, we need roll call.
I'm sorry, you're right. Go ahead.
Councilmember Days?
Here.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Present.
Councilmember Fitch?
Here.
Councilmember Gray?
Present.
Councilmember Clancy?
Here.
Councilmember Trachis?
Present.
Councilmember Harder?
Here.
Mr. Presiding Officer, you have a quorum.
Thank you. So, now, is there a motion for approval of the Journal of the Meeting of August 20th, 2019?
So, moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The Journal for the August 20th, 2019 Meeting is approved. We have no bid openings this evening, so we'll move to communications.
Mr. Presiding Officer, we have no tax compromises this evening, so we will move to zoning matters. Under zoning matters, item number one, Sixth District.
Receive, file, and the county councillor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number two, Sixth District.
Same motion, and that will be the order.
Item number three, All Districts.
Receive, file, and the county councillor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number four, All Districts.
Receive, file, and the county councillor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
We have no road and bridge matters this evening, so we'll move to other communications. Under Other Communications, item number one.
Receive, file, and the county councillor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number two, Seventh District.
Receive, file, and the appointments be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number three?
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number four, Second District.
Receive, file, and the agreement be approved as recommended.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number five, excuse me, Seventh District.
Receive, file, and the agreement be approved as recommended.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number six?
Receive, file, and the appropriation transfer be approved as requested. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number seven, Sixth District.
Receive, file, and refer to the Department of Transportation and Public Works, Department of Planning, and the county councillor, and that will be the order.
Item number eight?
Receive, file, and the county councillor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion through item number 11, and that will be the order.
Item number 12, Second District.
Receive, file, and the county councillor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
And that will be the order.
Item number 13?
Receive, file, and the county councillor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order. Any add-ons?
No add-ons this evening.
Okay, very well. Report to the county executive.
Thank you, Ernie. We can do better. That's where we are as a county and as a region. We know we have challenges, and we know we can do better. But we have, as a group, simply not done so. We've talked about problems for decades. In too many places, like on MetroLink, crime is still out of control. Access to job training and educational opportunities in St. Louis County is still unequal. Too often, many local governments in our region just don't get along or refuse to work The latest attempt to change things in a big way, Better Together, collapsed under its own weight. But in its wake, we have a renewed conversation on what all needs to change. I'm committed to doing what's necessary to make government more effective and efficient. And if making government better in St. Louis County means a better working relationship with St. Louis City, or if it means St. Louis County, or St. Louis City becoming part of St. Louis County, then we should have that conversation. In September, we expect to have enough signatures to initiate the Board of Freeholder process. First step will be to work with this council to appoint and confirm the people to serve on this board representing the county. For several weeks, I've reached out to our residents, civic and business leaders, and community organizations to learn what they think is important and what this board should do. I also want to hear from this council, and I want you to share your ideas with me and with my staff. We've been accepting online applications for the board, for members of the public, but today I want to again invite everyone to apply on the board, on the county webpage, for the Board of Freeholders. I don't really have any preconceived ideas about who will serve on the Board of Freeholders, but I do believe it should look like St. Louis County, and it must be filled with people who are committed to keeping the best interests of St. Louis County foremost in mind. As the Board of Freeholders process begins, we're continuing our work to restore the trust and credibility in county government, especially in the boards and commissions we appoint. In the past, some of our regional efforts were undermined by greed and corruption. So, we've begun making new appointments to the St. Louis Economic Development Partnership to get things back on track. And we're working closely with East-West Gateway to improve oversight and transparency, particularly over another important regional institution, Bi-State Development. Bi-State, which runs MetroLink and MetroBuses, has requested $160 million from the county for its 2020 budget. At the same time, Bi-State is substantially cutting services to county residents, and it's cutting services here at a much greater rate than other parts of the region. Meanwhile, crime on MetroLink is still a big problem. Years ago, we were promised that this problem was under control. Nothing has really changed. Our police department is doing a good job on MetroLink routes in the county, but there simply aren't enough police on some of the other MetroLink routes. Make no mistake, St. Louis County is ready to help bring down crime throughout all of the MetroLink region. MetroLink needs to be safe, not years from now, but right now. And if Bi-State can't do it, the rest of the region has to be ready to step in. And although Bi-State should be focusing on the crime problem, we find ourselves instead dealing with a governance controversy. Friday, I expressed my concerns to the Illinois Governor, J.B. Pritzker's office. But yesterday, Governor Pritzker signed a bill into law that would give St. Clair County as much as twice the number of seats on the Bi-State board that St. Louis County gets. St. Clair County will now have four seats on the board and effectively be able to veto any of Bi-State's business. And this happened in spite of the fact that St. Louis County provides three times as much funding to Bi-State as St. Clair County does. We pay about $100 million more per year to Bi-State than they do, and St. Louis County funds 47% of their budget. St. Clair County funds 17%. In 2020 alone, we will pay $8 million to pay off Bi-State's debt, and St. Clair County, on the other hand, won't pay a penny. So, I have a few questions for those we thought were friends in Illinois. In what world is this right, and how is this fair? How can you justify an aggressive maneuver that undermines your neighbors without even a public conversation at the Bi-State board, or even a respectful conversation with us? The simple truth is that one county in Illinois will now have veto power over how more than $160 million of St. Louis County tax money is spent. And that's not what St. Louis County voters agreed to. It's not what we signed up for, and we have to take it seriously. And we now have to hold St. Clair County accountable for what Bi-State does and how they operate. I was also concerned to learn of what appears to be irregularities in the vote to hire the new leader of Bi-State. It's disappointing, and it doesn't inspire confidence. But I have to say, I've met with Talby Roach, and frankly, I like him. I think he's a good person who's trying to do the right thing as he sees it. But let's be honest, the irregularities in the selection process erode the public's trust in Bi-State. It must now do what it takes to be open and honest in all of its decisions. You know, Bi-State's latest public relations campaign is called Metro Reimagined, but it increasingly sounds like to St. Louis County ears, what St. Clair County is saying, "We're taking over, we're cutting your services, and we're sending you the bill." That's not how things should work. That's not how I imagine the future of public transportation. Transit should be accessible to as many of our residents as possible, and it should be free from selfish games and parlor tricks. Since 2014, ridership is down 27% on the MetroLink. St. Louis County contribution over the years, over that same time period, has increased by about that much, by about 27%. The system cannot sustain itself much longer if riders continue to flee. We must ensure that to the public, that Bi-State's leadership is in it for the public good and not bending to the political will of St. Clair County. This latest power grab is fraught with reminders of what we just left here in St. Louis County. No matter what others do, we can't lose sight of who we are and who we serve. We are residents elected by St. Louis County to represent them. Regional institutions like Bi-State can work well, but they can also be wrecked by greed and secrecy. With regional cooperation under attack, it is important to us to stand up and to protect the people of St. Louis County, and that's exactly what we'll do. Thank you, Ernie.
Thank you, Sam. Report to special committees. The Ethics Committee will hold out on the Order of Business, and that will be the order. Public Forum.
Mr. Presiding Officer, we have 16 speakers this evening.
Very well. So, as you all know, public forum is your opportunity to address the council. We look forward to it. I would remind you that you're limited to three minutes. Typically, with this number of speakers, I'll give you a little grace, but I'm going to try to adhere as close to three minutes as I can. So, I would ask that you keep that in mind as you give your remarks. Please direct your remarks to the Presiding Officer, not to any council member in particular or to the county executive. And then lastly, I'm going to reiterate my request from earlier, a few minutes ago, that any speaker, if it's a male, to remove their hat and show respect for this body. With that, proceed.
First speaker this evening is Crystal Harris.
My name is Crystal Harris, and I work for St. Louis County Animal Care Control. Kind of redid my speech because I want to make sure I got this out before my three-minute term up today. I would like to challenge the whole entire board, including Spring Schmidt, to work one full eight-hour shift at this shelter, or if you're feeling of interest, 16 hours for two days. We need, do you guys understand, the full severity that we're working with? We understand everything that's going on. We need you to understand what is going on. The issue that we have is, yes, you can come in and do a walk-through and say, "Good job, keep up going." Walk-through is not going to cut it. You need to see what goes on behind the scenes. Get dirty with this. If you accept the challenge, we do ask that it be either September or the month of October. You don't have to do it all together, individual, whenever. Of course, we check with our operation manager to make sure what day would work. Bring two pairs of clothes in case it gets really dirty, pair of old shoes, and allergy pills in case you're allergic to anything. The thing with the walk-through is, it's hard for the shelter to realize what you see when you just walk through, say, "Good job," and you walk away. You see the front, but you don't see the back. With this right now, with the situation that's going on, we totally feel like the redheaded stepchild of county. The PH does not want us, but we don't feel like county wants us. At the point right now, we feel like you want to sweep us under the roof and get rid of us. We don't want that. We want to see county rapidly lose our, we want to see county employees. We don't want new entity. We heard everything that was said last week by Spring Schmidt. The issue we have with it is, didn't anybody look into the "what-if" factors? We heard that, yes, we can transfer to other departments, we can try to apply for the position again, but what if county has no jobs, no openings? What if there's a hiring freeze? It's government, it's going to happen at some point. What if you apply for a position again, and that new entity does not want you there? Are we stuck there to physically train that new person into our position, and then we're out? Has anybody thought about that? The comments last week were a slap in the face to us. And the polling we're out right now is so low, so low. We don't know what's going on. We don't have a job tomorrow or next week. The issue that we also have is, we need answers. We need to know what's going on. Being told that we're working on two things at the same time, that scares us. How can you work on two things when you're trying to do one thing? And it's in sap, you want a consultant to come in, but also you want a brand-new entity to take over the county position, to take over the shelter. How is that even possible? How are we supposed to try to fix that we know is broken when you won't give us the opportunity to fix what is broken?
That's three minutes, Mr. Presiding.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Just go ahead, finish your statement.
We just need, we need no answers. We need answers. Are we going to have a job? Are we not going to have a job? We need to know. We don't know. Are you going to let us fix what is broken, or are you going to get rid of us? We need to...
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Harris.
Next speaker is Isora Liggins.
First, I would like to congratulate both of the Congresswomen who are newly appointed, Congresswoman Day and Congressman Dunaway. My name is Isora Liggins, 5320, Bermuda. Good evening, council. Good evening, county executive Page and this entire council. I have been coming before this council for several years. I need to make it clear that I have never came before this council and asked for anything other than due process and equal protection. I have never asked for special treatment, only for treatment as provided under our Constitution. I have sought these basic rights from this county regarding these issues because the violations have occurred in this county. I am troubled when I am informed that this governing body does not have jurisdiction over these basic rights. I am asking, I am making a request for myself and all others similarly situated, that the county executive's office and the county council clarify in layman terms what the people can expect from this governing body regarding bridging the racial divide, due process, equal protection, and basic fairness here in St. Louis County for all. Chairman Tranquus, I read in a recent interview you had with South County Times, you highlighted steps to the right the ship in Clayton. The list included transparent and accountable government, oversight and scrutiny of transactions, eliminate rumpus stamps. You mentioned the opioid crisis, abortion laws, metro, safety, airport roads, and bridges. Chairman Tranquus, I was disappointed when bridging the racial divide and basic fairness for all did not make the outline necessary steps to right the ship in Clayton. I ask that both fairness and equality would be a permanent fixture on the St. Louis County's agenda until both have been secured for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Liggins.
Next speaker is Garrett Meese.
I may need some of that grace. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here yet once again to address the violations of county ordinances 1003.6167 and 716.225. For those of you new to the council, congratulations and welcome. Although this issue predates your arrival to this dais, it is however now in your hands to do the right thing, unlike what's happened to this point. I was informed that just last night, just last night by law enforcement, that they are not being able to enforce the above-mentioned ordinances as a result of someone on this dais believed that the definition is, is not really is. More specifically, the difference between the legal terms "may" and "shall." I will remind you again that since Section 602.360 defines tobacco products, including pipes, papers, and liquids, going on to define electronic smoking devices such as e-cigarettes and hookah, including any component, part, or accessory of such a device, whether it is sold separately, included, or substance intended, aerized or vaporized during the use of the device. In the section 617.225, sale of tobacco near schools used to read, "It shall be unlawful to sell or offer sale within 300 feet of any school building and tobacco product." It's now 1,000 feet due to the new legislation signed by Mr. Page. But since the issue started under the old ordinance, that's what we have to work with. Is my understanding that it might be, might be a question to the description of a school building? For some, perhaps I can clear that up to you by reading the ordinance. "The school building shall include the entirety of any building in part or by which students, education, or school-sponsored students, recreation, assembly, or activity takes place. As the building sits directly adjacent to the school property line and within 60 feet of the school building, this clearly disqualifies the inventory for this side of their business to be sold at this location. Thus, the remaining inventory consisting of adult novelties far exceeds 10%, classifying them as an adult-oriented business, and also disqualifies them for operating at this location." I also understand that there seemed to be some confusion as to the distance of the county park that is located directly across the street, since there is a parcel of land that belongs to the Port Authority that sits across the street adjacent to the park. Although true, the parking lot of the park, that is park property, extends to the roadway directly across the street and well within the 300 feet of the original ordinance. In addition, there is residents within 300 feet of this business as well, also in violation of the original ordinance. I am once again asking that this business be vacated immediately as the facts are in. I understand that there may be a few other businesses that also will be affected.
That's three minutes.
Yet, as anyone that has ever been in court knows, the ignorance of the law does not exclude you from the penalty of law. So, the point that now no one knew about this ordinance does not negate it. Clearly, someone...
I have to ask you to wrap up, please.
Yep. Clearly, someone made a mistake by allowing this, yet all of you are willing to prevent construction companies from being, growing in their business due to the assault. I would just ask that you would prevent the sale of poison in my neighborhood.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Amanda Hayes.
My name is Amanda Hayes. I'm the Director of Medication Safety and Effectiveness for BJC Healthcare. I reside at 13506 River Forest Place in St. Louis County, and I'm pleased to be here tonight to speak in support of the bill for Department of Public Health opioid non-fatal overdose reporting. BJC is very appreciative of the leadership demonstrated by St. Louis County Department of Public Health, specifically as we are facing an unprecedented opioid crisis. From St. Louis County Department of Public Health, establishing the first in-state prescription drug monitoring program, which we use day in and day out to ensure appropriate prescribing of medications across BJC Healthcare. Additionally, St. Louis County Public Health Department partnered with us as they developed their opioid action plan that was released last year. Because of this, we believe they remain focused on the care of our communities, a mission that aligns with BJC Healthcare. Across the 15 hospitals and integrated delivery system of BJC, we are faced every day with patients afflicted with overdoses from drugs of abuse and misuse. In some of our hospitals, we estimate over 10,000 visits annually from overdoses in our hospitals. For patients with opioid use disorder, there is a need for a time-critical intervention. Often, this occurs when the time of drug abuse or misuse is reversed by our healthcare providers. At this point, the historical approach for these patients was to simply tell them, "Get treatment," hand them a pamphlet, and simply say, "Good luck." Those pamphlets would often give information to them on where to call, to go to for follow-up care for their substance use disorder. We have now learned through partnerships across the state, locally, and at national levels, that there is really a time-critical diagnosis that's necessary to facilitate better access to treatment for these patients. Without the intervention at this critical period and juncture, we know it's often too late for these patients, and that their next time they visit us may be with a fatal overdose. We believe that this intervention point cannot be handled by the health systems alone, and that partnership with external agencies, such as the County Public Health Department, are necessary to curb this epidemic. The Department of Public Health can provide much-needed support in these efforts and ultimately reduce the impact on St. Louis County if they believe that, if they have the data necessary to fully understand the impact and be able to appropriately deploy resources. BJC has worked with the Department of Public Health on this initiative since the spring of 2018 on various aspects of the opioid action plan, specifically the need for non-fatal overdose reporting. BJC, again, in partnership with the Department of Public Health and other healthcare companies in town, has been able to explore and validate the required elements in the overdose reporting guide presented to you later this evening. We at BJC very much appreciate the support of the collaborative nature of the request as mandated reporting on healthcare systems is often an additional burden for us.
That's three minutes, Mr. Presiding.
As the opioid crisis continues to impact our communities, BJC supports the need for increased surveillance and intervention for non-fatal overdoses, and is grateful to be in support of the Overdose Reporting Act.
Thank you, Ms. Hayes.
Next speaker is Ed Golderman.
My name is Ed Golderman. I live in Kirkwood, and Illinois is smarter than Missouri and has been for the last 30 years, so stop whining. Illinois got the stimulus money from our last president. They're 30 years ahead of us on higher speed, so, you know, good luck with working with whatever you need to do in Illinois. The executive just talked about working with three failed agencies, three completely failed agencies, so good luck with that. But I'm here tonight to go back to 1917. Right now, in 1917, the mayor had asked my grandfather, who had opened the greatest outdoor theater in America, to keep it going, keep it going, keep it going. It opened in June. Keep it going, the people need it. So, my grandfather and his committee kept the municipal theater open until deeply into September because the people needed it and we needed it. They were honorable people. My grandfather was honorable. Those who closed the muni on August 11th are dishonorable people, very, very dishonorable people. And they cost us every year 30 million a year in late summer travel, travel for entertainment, people who would bring their kids in for, to bring them to college here for the first time, couldn't give them a night at muni. They might stay over, they might come in early. All of these festivals where people come into town, none of them would go. The people who come in for the Labor Day holiday, what degradation. My request to you is that you pull all, excuse me, is that you pull all tax money out of Forest Park because our money is being used dishonorably. And I think what I've heard tonight is you could use $60 million. Thank you, Mr. Temporary Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Goldman.
Next speaker is Dan Millman.
My name is Dan Millman, and I'm an alderman for the city of Frontenac. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening regarding the St. Louis County Library Board of Directors. First, it's worth repeating that the city of Frontenac is not anti-library. We have said both publicly and privately that Frontenac would welcome a history and genealogy center on the recently purchased property. To that end, we have never indicated that the library board should sell that parcel. What we... What we have said is that they do not need a more than eighty thousand square foot building on a residential street for administration, warehouse, and distribution. Just because the library can ignore public safety issues doesn't mean they should. Just because they can spend thirty million dollars on this building doesn't mean they should. Make no mistake, this building is a Taj Mahal for the employees of the county library. Eighty to ninety percent of the building does not directly serve the public. The library has stated that a hundred and eighty support staff will relocate to their new building. After deducting space for their warehouse and the relatively small genealogy center, that's roughly three hundred square feet per employee. I run my own business and I love my employees, but three hundred square feet per employee is ridiculous. But what's most troubling about the board, though, is the process they undertook to purchase this land. A quick history of Frontenac. Adjacent to the east of where the library paid a million dollars an acre, the Ladoo School District had a former preschool on Clayton Road that it was trying to sell. The public process lasted for years, as Ladoo tried to sell to various entities that, unlike the library, would require rezoning, including various commercial activities. Ultimately, McBride Homes outbid the library and purchased nine acres for five million, or about five hundred fifty thousand dollars per acre. The library board then implemented the following steps. One, they waived their own requirement that, that calls for appraisals before land purchases. Two, they used a third party to approach four residents who are not actively marketing their homes to see if they would sell if paid a large enough sum. Three, they forced those residents to sign a nondisclosure agreement. Four, they paid a million dollars an acre for six acres, or six acres, almost double the price of the former Ladoo School property and two to three times what the land was worth. Last, fifth, they quickly selected, selected a contract to do the work without an RFP process. Basically, the library's board got deal fever after failing to acquire the former Ladoo School property, and decided that with their large, large chest of propellent money, they would make sure they found a prime location for their Taj Mahal. When questioned why they would do such a thing, their response has basically been, "Because we can." I only have firsthand knowledge of the dealings in Frontenac, so I won't comment on the other library land dealings in Fenton, Afton, et cetera. But their actions in Frontenac alone are enough to prove that the current appointed members of the library board cannot effectively perform their duty of providing oversight to the county library. Unlike elected officials who are directly answerable to the people they represent, the library board members who are serving beyond their expired terms do not have direct accountability. Therefore, we are asking the Honorable Sam Page to review all expired board members and replace them with a board that will provide proper oversight and accountability to the library going forward. We further ask each of the council members to support Dr. Page and his actions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Millman.
Next speaker is Erica Brooks.
Good evening, council members. Um, I come here once again to, uh, to pick up our bus route in Ferguson as the grassroots organizers to make sure that we have public access to our, to our business district. Even though we sat down and obtained route, uh, option three, Metro Reimagine has not held their end of the bargain to allow us to have service. They have it in their, uh, new bus service plan that we're supposed to have service all day, every day. They have it in there. And speaking of that, they have three different advertisements for our route. They have the route that we're doing right now on one site. They have the, the route that we agreed to on another site, because I actually emailed Jessica Gersham about why is it so much, uh, so much, uh, uh, this, you know, confusion as to why it's advertised like this and why our actual route is not advertised like that on, on all, all their sites. But I'm not gonna get caught up on that point there. But the whole thing as far as transparency, as far as by-state being accountable, as far as the itemized budget, they've, they have skirted through this whole thing asking for millions of dollars. And as I reviewed every bus route, the old version and the new version that's about to come up Sep- September thirtieth, um, I see how they got their money as far as saying they had low ridership, because they cut so many other people's routes such as mine, and said we had low ridership, when we clearly didn't. So when it came to cushioning people's routes throughout their communities like South City, South County, the West County out there, Central West End corridor, as well as downtown, they actually added connecting routes to their express routes. So therefore, when it comes to our route, we're looking, all we asked for was our business district, our access to that after seven PM as well as on weekends. But these other people, they have actual, I mean, it clearly says in their booklet that they're low ridership. And I asked Jessica Gersham last Tuesday, what's the difference between our low ridership and their low ridership? Something else that I wanted to do, I, I actually went throughout our business district. This, this past week, I started July thirtieth, asking businesses, uh, about their opinion about, um, keeping our access. I have actually thirty-four surveys from different businesses such as Snooks, Kathy's Kitchen, um, uh, U, U M B Bank, uh, every business, like I said, thirty of them. And they clearly stated that we need access to our bus route and our, and our business district, because there's so many of them that are, some of them are managers, that they leave after seven. Some have, they have, Subway had nine employees and five of them ride the bus. You know, so you have, we need clear access to a bus route after seven, because we matter too. We matter. And so when it comes to, uh, like I say, uh, other communities making these deals, uh, with Metro, because this clearly, this clearly was a system that was set up years ago, not just, uh, two thousand eighteen. These businesses were set up, uh, with these different officials, city officials, to say, "Hey, we want to have a service," because we know we, we got the soccer situation that's coming. So their whole system as far as transportation is covered. They got the express system, they got the normal routes. So when it comes to Central West End, and, you know, soccer downtown and the hockey out in the county, everybody's taken care of but us.
Mr. President, I need you to wrap up if you don't mind.
Okay. So all we're asking is that you, as county council members, allow us to have our access to our bus route in our community after seven, and also on weekends. They're talking about not giving us any service between our business on weekends. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks.
Next speaker is Lori Klingbed.
Thank you. Thank you. Hi, I'm Lori Klingbeau. I spoke a couple weeks ago. Um, I live in St. Louis City, but I volunteer at St., that's St. Clair, St. Louis County Animal Care and Control. Something happened today that kind of fits right in with what I'm going to speak on, and, um, there was a, it wasn't a drill, there was a fire alarm went off, um, staff got out. The four dogs that were, happened to be walked, are being walked during that, got out. So my concern is, what about the dogs that are inside? Now, I understand, from last I heard, there was like three hundred and fifty, three hundred and seventy dogs. Even if fully staffed, not all may get out, but I would think they deserve a fair shot. And, um, so with that said, I volunteered, volunteered there for about two months. I haven't had really encounter, too many encounters with staff. The encounters I've had have been pleasant. I go there to walk the dogs. When I see that other volunteers come across or, um, soil bodily fluids of dogs in the, in their kennels and that, I can't help but wonder, it can't be all put on the staff or the volunteers, the acting director or whomever, in my opinion, should get their, get fully staffed. Get these dogs out, get them, they're kind of relying on, in my opinion, how I see it, relying on volunteers to do part of the work. So basically, now the volunteers are unpaid staff. The volunteers do it for the love of the animal, I want to help them in that. And, um, it's supposed to be an outlet for, for us not actually to become a job. And from what I hear and read and see, there's tension between the workers and the, or the staff and the volunteers. And I work at an animal shelter part-time, I've done it for the past three years. There shouldn't be that tension. I can get it from the staff's side because I'm underworked, or I'm overworked, sorry. And I get tired. To work in a kill shelter, I can only imagine. Mine's no kill, and that's not even a hundred percent, you know, no kill. There'll be some. So I can't even begin to imagine. There's something called compassion fatigue, which is the handout I passed out, and it's been likened to having PTSD. People choose to go into that, volunteers choose to, to go in there. If not, who else is going to do it? And that, so being fully staffed would, should take off some of that pressure, I would hope, and that. And, um, I hear there's talk of hiring like a dog-walking service. I don't know how permanent that would be, or if that's even still on the table, but in my opinion, that's just putting a Band-Aid on a twelve-inch cut. It's not solving down the road.
That's Mr. Presiding Officer.
And that, so, um, I just wanted to say, as a volunteer and a worker at an animal shelter, I can see both sides, and we rely on, I as a worker rely on my volunteers. So I want to be like that. You tell me about the dogs. I work with them, I don't get them out as much. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Tom Sullivan.
Mr. Presiding Officer, I have a few things to mention. Last week, the council violated the sunshine law again by passing it, or it was only posted at two fifteen that afternoon. Another sunshine law complaint will be filed. The list keeps growing. I sent council members information on meetings Metro is having this week regarding its Metro Reimagine Plan. At the bottom of the information are dozens of comments from Metro writers. I hope you read them as they point out how controversial it can become when bus routes are rearranged. I recently received information on a number of people in the county consular's office. I was surprised to learn that former council administrative director Genevieve Frank is now a married employee. She, she has an attorney-three position at one hundred thousand two hundred ninety-seven dollars a year. I wonder how it came about that a non-practicing lawyer, who has struggled at times with understanding of the law, could get such a position? It's also interesting that five attorneys have been hired in consul's office since Sam Page became county executive. These are in addition to the new county consulate. I wonder how all that came about? Also, county executive Page formed a new campaign committee just a few days ago for his campaign next year. Checks should be made out to the Page PAC. It will be interesting to see who will be contributing. At last week's meeting, the council approved a resolution praising the reporting of Post Dispatch reporters, Jeremy Kohler and Jacob Barker, in regard to the corruption surrounding the Stinger administration. I agree they did some good work, but think some footnotes are needed. It should be remembered that Steve Stinger would have never become county executive except for the Post Dispatch. They made out Charlie Dooley to be the biggest crook in town, and Steve Stinger was the guy who would clean up county government. It didn't quite work out that way. After Stinger became county executive in two thousand fifteen, the Post Dispatch was asleep while a lot of questionable things were going on. And in the general election last year, the Post endorsed Steve Stinger, which sure surprised a lot of people. Thank you, Mr. Traigus.
Thank you, Tom.
Next speaker is Dr. Christine Schultz.
I am Dr. Christine Schultz. I live in DePere, and I work at St. Louis County Animal Care and Control. Today, I resigned. There have been many frustrations I've encountered caring for the two hundred fifty to three hundred fifty animals at Eric, uh, Animal Care and Control, the politics, multiple directors or lack of directors, the policy changes, the chronic understaffing, and the population way beyond our capacity to care. But what led to my resignation is the threat of privatization. Spring can call it whatever she wants, um, but it's privatization, it's not a partnership. And if it goes through, it will result in the loss of our jobs. The promise that we will be able to apply for our positions offers us no comfort, nor does the possibility that we can move elsewhere in the Department of Public Health when we have no qualifications for anything elsewhere. I've been a veterinarian for over twenty years and greater than twelve years in shelter medicine. There's a wealth of knowledge at Animal Care and Control, and they need to be allowed to develop and implement the policies and procedures without the reactionary influence of a board, the volunteers, and all the politicians. I request an investigation by the Committee of the Whole into the privatization of the shelter.
Thank you, Dr. Schultz.
Next speaker is Charles Kirkwood.
Good evening. I would like to thank the council for giving me this opportunity again. I was here, uh, last week talking about a problem that I was having, trying to get some things done, and I was excited to know that I'm dealing with a council that all of them can understand what's going on. And I'm also excited to know that Dr. Page, uh, stated last week, and I certainly believe it, I certainly appreciate it, that he's a Christian, and he, he certainly want to do the right thing. And I know all of you want to do it too. But I just want to just say that, uh, and I've been asked, said, "Why don't you go to the county?" I mean, to the city? Because, well, I live in the county, I go to church in the city, of course, and, well, go to the county, I mean, go to the city. And I did. I went to the city, and I filed a criminal complaint against SLDC, because I was certainly threatened not to talk about that project anymore. If I did, I would have some problems. So I, I said, "Okay." So I filed a complaint, a criminal complaint with Kim Gardner, Wesley Bell, Nicole Callaway, George Everett, and Eric, Eric Smith. And I, because I didn't like what they said and what they did. But I appreciate you all, and I hope you understand it is back again about the remediation of this place and city. And, you know, we talked about it. And I, you know, I, I used to come here a little early while I was working on my plans. I heard how passionate these people talked about the dogs and what they need. And I agree, dogs need to be treated human, as, as, humanity. So I agree with that. But I also want you to know that I would hope, and I got the phone numbers, I did the work, and you can call the federal government, and they can tell you the same thing I'm telling. It'll take about twenty minutes, and, and they, they willing to do what need to be done, to clean that place up of asbestos, because they see all these little black kids running around there, getting damaged for life. And I know none of you want that, because all of us, all of you probably have kids, and I got the wrong kid, but I do have a kid. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kirkwood.
Next speaker is Arnie Dineoff.
So, Dineoff, before you begin, I'm going to respectfully remind you again that the rules of this body are to ask that male, um, members of the public remove their hats. So with all due respect, I'm going to ask you to remove your hat prior to addressing this council.
Mr. Chairman, religious preference, uh, gives me the right to cover my head, and that is my religious, uh, preference under the United States Constitution and the Constitution of the State of Missouri. I give no disrespect to this body. I have a religious preference to cover one's head, the right of free expression, and the right of free dress. Wearing a hat to a public meeting or covering one's head, this case was recently adjudicated in the Missouri Supreme Court with a state worker, and the Missouri Supreme Court stated the religious preference to cover one's head for religious preference is allowed under the law in the Constitution of the State of Missouri. So if you want to consult with your county counselor, and if we want to go to court and take this on in, in the US District Court of Law, I'll be more than happy to do that. But I have the right to cover my head under religious expression and religious freedom.
And what religion would you be practicing, sir?
I don't have to tell you my religion. We have the right of free religion and the right of free speech in America. Last time I saw, this is America, is that correct?
So what we'll do, Mr. Dineoff, is we'll allow you to speak tonight. I will confer with council, and, um, we'll, uh, and this is for you, as you, as anybody else, we're going to seek to enforce our rules, and, um, we would expect all the public to respectfully comply with them. But please proceed.
Mr. Chairman, there is no state law, there's no federal law that says one cannot wear a hat.
Please proceed, Mr. Dineoff.
And there's no, there's no violation of law here.
Mr. Dineoff, you're already halfway through your time, sir.
The county executive said, uh, he wants to do the right thing. Mr. County Executive, how about starting today following the very important and sacred state open meetings and records law, chapter six ten? I still have not gotten response for my three requests and my additional two requests made on Friday in your office personally.
Mr. Dinoff, Director of Remarks to the Chair, please.
I am making them to the Chair, but I could look at anybody I want to on the dais. That's not against the law, is it?
Please proceed.
The county charter review commission meeting was held about three months ago and the state sunshine law was once again violated. Now, on Friday, I attended the jail review commission and that was met on Friday at 10 o'clock a.m. on the fifth floor of this building. The squaring in of that was done by the acting county clerk at 12:50, two hours and 50 minutes later. All the actions, any of those meeting issues are now null and void. In that meeting, what I don't understand is why we have a convicted former state representative, a Democrat, I'm sorry, a state senator Democrat who's a convicted felon and who may be on federal probation. Why is Jeff Smith appointed to this office? I don't believe he can hold this office under state law. A state law was passed by Brian Spencer, Republican in Wentzville, that stated that if you're a convicted felon, you can't hold public or appointed office. A quorum constitutes four people. There were only three members that were present at that meeting. And then they said that Spring Schmidt, the acting director of public health, now constitutes as a member. Last that I checked, Robert Jules Warder stated ex-official members do not have a vote whatsoever. Yet that board went into closed session.
Mr. Dinoff, I'd like you another minute to finish your statement, sir.
Thank you, sir. So basically, we have numerous closed session violations because they didn't have enough members to go into closed session. There was a huge red binder. And is this a dog and pony show commission? Are we going to make this information public? That red binder and that black binder that was presented by Deputy Chief Troy Doyle had information that needs to become a matter of public record. But yet, the county counselor, the assistant county counselor, said that it is in public for some reason. There's also the use of Dropbox. And Dropbox, under the state law and it's been adjudicated in the courts, say that Dropbox is a public record. I'd like to make sure that the Dropbox information that's being dropped there by staff and by the county counselor's office also is accessed by the public. And then notifications of meetings, there shouldn't be secret meetings, there shouldn't be rooms of paper. There aren't also the supporting documents that you put online. This commission should abide by those same rules and regulations.
Mr. Dinoff, I need you to wrap up, please.
It's about openness and it's about not politics, but serving people and making sure we don't have any more deaths in our county jail.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Tashonda Trup.
Good evening, Ms. Trup.
Good evening. Good evening, Council. My name is Tashonda Trup and I live in Pine Line. I sit here week after week and I listen and hear money being passed around for everything but the Justice Center. What part of the county's budget goes to improving the jail? In the Justice Services meeting on Friday, it was said that the jail is short-staffed as far as guards and medical staff. Why can't this county direct some of those funds toward better pay so individuals will want to work in the Justice Center? Although I do blame the medical staff and the guards who watch my sons suffer and did nothing, but I also blame this county. This county has to lead by example. The example I see is that everything else matters except the Justice Center. Ironic that it has that name because it's the one place that seems to never get any justice. I would love to come to a meeting and hear we're allocating these funds to improve the Justice Center. When Lieutenant Colonel Doyle first started, he stated he wanted an outside audit of the Justice Center. What happened to that? Or is that one of the things that St. Louis County don't have funds for? I think this county needs to be just as committed to the Justice Center as you are to all the other causes. You can't make St. Louis County great again if you don't make the Justice Center better.
Thank you, Ms. Trup.
Next speaker is Erin Kelly.
Thank you so much for letting me speak today. My name is Erin Kelly. I reside at 12981 Balbeck Drive in St. Louis, Missouri, 63127. I'm here today to encourage this council, as you rec, or I'm sorry, as you review recommendations from the Planning and Zoning Committee regarding buffer zones for medical marijuana to consider 1,000 feet. I've had, in this process, I've had a couple of interesting things kind of pushed back to me. So one of them was the fact that this should be considered like alcohol was considered. So as I'm looking at the, I apologize for reading on my phone, but the liquor application process, it says it should be unlawful for any person to manufacture, sell or expose, for sale liquor to this county without first having it obtained from the county license. So every time you want to sell or manufacture liquor, you have to come to your group and get approval for that. You have to get a license. So to me, it's not really fair to think about medical marijuana that way when, at a state level is where this is approved. So that's kind of where I push back to considering 1,000 feet because that is what you passed for our tobacco license. That happened because 10 years ago vaping started and that device was not really considered like a cigarette, it wasn't considered dangerous to kids. I think all of you have heard in the last week, over 200 people have been hospitalized because they're showing symptoms of the exact same kind of lung damage. So, you know, we had 10 years to figure that out and before that happened, you all passed a law to protect our kids. So I just encourage you to keep continuing, to consider the fact that 300 feet is half of the distance between the arch of legs. You can almost throw, like I can throw anything that far. The arch is 600 feet apart, so if we're considering 500 feet, still, I can lob a softball most to that way. And then if you consider 1,000 feet, that's about three football fields. That's still, I can yell something to somebody really, really loud and they can hear me. It's not that far away. It's not unreasonable for us to consider that in expectation, our community, that it's three football fields away from where we have kids going to school every day. So as I speak, I'm the executive director of Step Up of St. Louis. My goal is to prevent long-term drug use in our area, substance misuse. So I'm here to speak for, I just understood the number is 219,000 kids. So we have 219,000 people under the age of 18 in the St. Louis County area. Denver describes the age of 10 to 18, the age of influence. Right now, in our, in our county area, we have 5,800 children under the age of five. So you're making a decision right now that is super important for the kids.
That's three minutes, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Oh, sorry. It's super important for these kids. Let's especially talk about the ones under the age of five. Denver legalized medical marijuana, or I'm sorry, Colorado legalized medical marijuana in 2000. So this is now 18 years later. You know, right now, they're not having, I think, as many issues as they have along the past. If you look at those numbers and what happened as soon as it was legalized, their accidents went up. Let's not, let's not let our 219,000 kids be an experiment here.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Gregory Powers.
My name is Gregory Powers. And I live in St. Louis County. I'm addressing St. Louis County Executive, County Counsel and Library Board President. I submitted an application to be considered as a library board member today. I sent a copy to all of the county council members and county executive page. It is my understanding that all of the current members' terms have expired. I'm seeking a position to allow any member who would like to have a replacement and an opportunity to do so. Having experienced members is good, but there's a time when having new members with the support and experience members adds to the position or the transition. The years I was on the Parkway School Board taught me that being on any board is a commitment. Recently, I've been on the library board's website gathering information to learn and show my interest in the position. When I went into board docs, it brought me back to the time on the Parkway School Board. This was one of the ways I prepared for meetings. I am reviewing recent minutes and the bylaws, but this is only the beginning and I appreciate this opportunity. Thank you. Oh, one other postscript. You indicated that there are a lot of boards that need members and there is an application online. It is a little bit tricky sometimes, but I had some help. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Powers.
Final speaker this evening is Phil Duval.
Good evening, Mr. Presiding Officer, Councilman, our distinguished, esteemed new leader, County Executive Page. I come here with a heavy heart. I want to first start by saying it's a humbling experience to co-chair the Justice Services Advisory Board. It should be noted that Lieutenant Colonel Doyle's leadership in trying to change the culture and hold folks accountable, that he's doing an absolute great job and diligent and he's also very responsive to the advisory board. In addition to some of what I had considered early on, some stresses between the public health side, but I'm happy to say and report that we are making some progress and we look forward to giving some sound advice relative to improving the services. I think it's also be noted what Tashonda Trup mentioned about the budget. It's going to be extremely difficult to change the culture and to really advance in a proper way. If we cut the budget that's already been cut years and years prior to, that possibly caused some of the things that led to the lack of services, if you will, resulting in the death. But I come here tonight to talk about something that's very disturbing relative to the St. Louis County Police Department. It should be noted that though I'm an activist, I'm still a human being and a citizen that drives the streets throughout this area. I support law enforcement, as I mentioned, the professionalism of Lieutenant Colonel Doyle and also the professionalism that I interact with various officers that I meet in this building as well as outside. With that said, there should be a level of accountability with the leadership of St. Louis County Police. There are internally some issues. I would like to note, and I've mentioned already to Mr. Weaver, that Rochelle, I will be coming to you, Councilwoman Gray, with a full comprehensive report spelling out eight major issues with the county police department. Now, over the years, I've always talked about oversight. We recognize tonight, as we're listening to all the expired terms of various boards, we know that that Police Commissioner Board has some expired terms on it. So it's either that leadership that needs to change the culture or the chief himself, who I view as a friend. However, accountability doesn't stop just because we're friends. Now, there are issues within this department that have articulated to the leadership and they have failed to mention it. The disproportionate discriminatory actions relative to the Ethical Society of Police members that have put forth several different things before this council. Back in November of 2018, there were several speakers that came before this body to explain some of the multiple issues and concerns that Ethical Society of Police. Now, thank you, and I promise to wrap up. Why this is so interesting is because talking is free, meeting is free, lawsuits cost money. And if there are certain things, incremental changes that are not made in a much urgent way, we're going to find ourselves spending more money in a legal fight for something that could have been taken care of in a boardroom. I'd like to encourage the council and anybody who can talk to Chief Belmer, I did speak with Commissioner last night, I don't have to be in the room, fix the issues without my voice.
Thank you, Reverend Duval. That concludes public forum. Let's proceed with introduction of bills.
Bill number 241, introduced by Councilmember Tracus, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $110,893.97 from the Missouri Department of Public Safety, appropriating the same for support of the Choices Drug and Alcohol Treatment Program and authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents. Bill number 242, introduced by Councilmember Tracus, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $279,509.83 from the Missouri Department of Public Safety, appropriating the same for support of the multi-jurisdictional drug task force and authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents. Bill number 243, introduced by Councilmember Days, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an automotive equipment repair contract and up to three subsequent renewals with the Housing Authority of St. Louis County. Bill number 244, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Trans Systems Corporation for engineering services related to improvement of Creve Corneille Road and authorizing the Director of Transportation to execute necessary documents for revision of work activity schedules, AR-1563. Bill number 245, introduced by Councilmember Tracus, an ordinance amending Chapter 602, Title VI, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances 1974 is amended, Public Health, by adding and enacting six new sections comprising the St. Louis County Overdose Reporting Act, authorizing the county executive to accept grants and donations, appropriating same in support of the reporting program and authorizing suspensions or reinstatements of certain sections by council order. Bill number 246, introduced by Councilmember Tracus, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Access Engineering LLC for engineering services in connection with replacement of two Bauer Road culverts, construction of a Music Avenue pedestrian signal and a Baumgartner Road guardrail and authorizing the Director of Transportation to execute necessary documents for revision of work activity schedules, CR-1677, CR-1760 and AR-1790. Bill number 247, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Engineering Design Source Inc. for consulting engineering services in connection with improvement of Washington Street within the city of Florissant and authorizing the Director of Transportation to execute necessary documents for revision of work activity schedules, AR-1719. Bill number 248, introduced by Councilmember Tracus, an ordinance amending ordinance number 27,384 by repealing and reenacting Section 1 pertaining to a grant from the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services for support of the Hepatitis A outbreak project. Bill number 249, introduced by Councilmember Tracus, an ordinance amending Chapter 1003, Title 10, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances 1974 is amended, zoning ordinance by repealing and reenacting Sections 1003.020, 1003.107, 1003.109, 1003.133, 1003.135, 1003.141, 1003.151, 1003.153, 1003.165A, 1003.165B, 1003.165D and 1003.200 to add various regulations pertaining to medical marijuana facilities. Mr. Presiding Officer, that is all the bills.
Thank you, Madam戳. Let's proceed with perfection.
Bill number 20, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Please hold. Bill number 20 is held.
Bill number 194, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
I'm going to hold it this week, but most likely this will be dropped.
Very well. Bill number 194 is held.
Bill number 207, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
I'm going to go ahead and drop Bill number 207.
Bill number 224, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number 224.
Second. Hold in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Bill number 224 is perfected.
Bill number 229, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to perfect Bill number 229. Second. Hold in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Bill 229 is perfected.
Bill number 230, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to perfect Bill number 230. Second. Hold in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Bill number 230 is perfected.
Bill number 231, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
I move to perfect Bill number 231. Second. Hold in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Bill number 231 is perfected.
Bill number 232, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to perfect Bill number 232. Second. Hold in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Bill number 232 is perfected.
Bill number 234. Bill number 234, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
I move to perfect Bill number 234.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 234 is perfected.
Bill number 235, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to perfect Bill number 235.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 235 is perfected.
Bill number 236, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to perfect Bill number 236.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 236 is perfected.
Bill number 237, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
I move to perfect Bill number 237.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 237 is perfected.
Bill number 238, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
I move to perfect Bill number 238.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 238 is perfected.
Bill number 239, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number 239.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 239 is perfected. Final passage.
Bill number 208, introduced by Councilmember Fitch.
This bill is signed into law by the county executive and passed by this council will set up a whistleblower protection hotline. So employees, members of the public can call into this hotline to report any misconduct or alleged misconduct related to the procurement process. And the other thing that it will do is if an employee is a whistleblower, it will protect them from discharge or any punitive action because of, of being a whistleblower. So based on that, I move for final passage of Bill number 208.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on Bill number 208, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 208 is finally passed.
Substitute Bill number one for Bill number 217, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch, Walton Gray, and Clancy.
I move for final passage of Substitute Bill number one for Bill number 217.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Just to note, this, this bill removes some of the fees that have been imposed on people who are incarcerated at our Justice Center. I think it's an important step, one of many reforms that need to happen there, so I vote aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on Substitute Bill number one for Bill 217, there are seven ayes.
Very well, Substitute Bill number one for Bill number 217 is finally passed.
Bill number 221, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move for final passage of Bill number 221.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on Bill 221, there are seven ayes.
Thank you. Bill number 221 is finally passed.
Bill number 222, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move for final passage of Bill number 222.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on Bill 222, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 222 is finally passed.
Substitute Bill number one for Bill number 223, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
I move for final passage of Substitute Bill number one for Bill number 223.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on Substitute Bill number one for Bill 223, there are seven ayes.
Very well, Substitute Bill number one for Bill number 223 is finally passed.
Bill number 225, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move for final passage of Bill number 225.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on Bill 225, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 225 is finally passed.
Bill number 226, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move for final passage of Bill number 226.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on Bill 226, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 226 is finally passed.
Bill number 227, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
I move for final passage of Bill number 227.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on Bill 227, there are seven ayes.
Thank you.